Okay, this regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state laws. Really just want to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just ask right now if you would please turn your cell phones to off or silent if you have not already done so. And we really do appreciate the time that you've taken to join us here and for your interest in Waco Independent School District. Este junta regla de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que no se observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir con todos sus conferencias. Está disponible en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que se fue discutida está disponible para todos. Por favor apagar sus teléfonos celular en les agradecimos el tiempo que compartí con nosotros y estudian tres en Waco ISD. The Board functions by a code of ethics, and I'm going to read our equity in attitude. We as the Board will be fair and impartial in all of our decisions and actions. We will accord others the respect that we wish for ourselves. We will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to other ideas. Of that, we are going to move on to item number two, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to our moment of silence and pledge. If you would go ahead and just pause with me real quick for a time of prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or meditation. Okay, thank you. Pledge leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the Board members would meet me in front of the dais.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, and Dr. Kincanon. Tonight, we are going to begin our special recognitions with our pledge leaders from Lake Air Monastery, who are Wilder Northern, a first grader who loves art and math, and he enjoys swimming, going to church, playing basketball, and helping his dad coach football. He is also very interested in how big a megalodon is. Me too, Wilder, me too. When he grows up, he would like to become a police officer or a firefighter. Thank you to his parents, Marissa and Zach Northern, for being here tonight and for sharing your amazing son with us. Our next pledge leader is Reagan Maldonado, a second grader. Her favorite subject is reading, and she enjoys gymnastics, coloring, watching TV, and going to church. Reagan would like to be a gymnastics teacher when she grows up. Thank you to Mom Michaela Allen and grandmother Darlena Smith for being here tonight and sharing your amazing child with us. And thank you to Assistant Principal Northern for being here and sharing your wonderful students with us. Next, we're excited to recognize our Thesbian National Qualifiers. Students participated in the Texas Thesbian Festival in November, and we're excited to share with you the following students who have advanced as national qualifiers, and they will compete this summer in Bloomington. University High School in the monologue category, Jimmy Shipringle. Noah Martinez. Derek Thomas. And thank you to Savannah Jones for all of the work that you do with this amazingly talented group. Waco High School in duet acting category, we have Lily Howell. Lydia Allen. Claire Prather. And Sarah Townsend. Solo musical, we have Viana Ramos. Isley Lawson. And Andrew Eggers. In monologue, we have Eleanor Rhodes. Stage management, Deidra Brinkley. Thank you so much to Ms. Liz Vermillion for being here tonight and for all of the amazing work you do with this group. We also want to recognize Tennyson Middle School students who were unable to be here tonight due to a conflict, but for group acting, we are recognizing Katerina Telip, Caroline Hoag. Sure, oh, group photo. Amazing. Universities? Tighten up just a bit. There you go. A little bit more. Congratulations. And our Tennyson Middle School students who were unable to be here tonight for group acting, Katerina Telip, Caroline Hoag, Kiaris Henderson, Alina Aijason, and Sally Uger. And also not present from University High School are Daisy Barco, Waco High School, Elia Contreras, and Waco High School Miriam Gudsum. Congratulations to you all. And the Waco Outstanding Community Partner Award for November goes to the Heart of Texas Goodwill. Here to accept the award tonight are Shannon Whitmer, President and CEO, Denise Wetzel, VP of Mission Advancement, Melvina Lewis, Mission Services Director, and Leah Berry, Mission Services Director. The Heart of Texas Goodwill partners with school districts, including Waco ISD, to provide training to students with disabilities in the 18-plus program. They offer various trainings for job readiness and regularly provide meeting space to Waco ISD, and we thank you so much for all that you do for the district and our students and staff. Thank you for your support, congratulations. And that concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
Okay. Always the best part of the evening, getting to see all the kids. Love everyone else who presents, but always great to recognize our kiddos. Okay, moving on to item number five, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kincanon.
All right, well, good evening and happy holidays. It's great to see everyone. I have just a couple of items this evening. First, I want to talk about the relocation of Kendrick Elementary to Indian Spring. It's hard to believe that the first semester is nearly over and it's time to move Kendrick over to Indian Spring, as we've been talking about, but it's been a great fall in their current facility. We hosted a special final community walkthrough at Kendrick prior to Thanksgiving to facilitate an opportunity for anyone who attended the school to be able to visit it one last time, and it was well-attended. So I want to thank all of our Board members who were able to come and join us. It was really special having all the yearbooks out and visiting with people. I even talked to a couple who had had their polio vaccinations at Kendrick Elementary back in the day. That just shows you the age of that school facility. So, and there were several other really great conversations. I know Mr. Grant had some interactions with people who had been there as well, so it was a lot of fun. And we've been working really hard to prepare for the transition. Principal Lozano and staff members from all across our department's facilities, maintenance, curriculum and instruction, and student services have been meeting regularly to prepare and also have been working to prepare the Indian Spring campus. And so I would like to thank them, and then I'd also like to thank our teachers and staff at Kendrick for their work to make this move possible. If you've ever had to move, you know what a pain that is and how hard it is to get all of your things moved into a new location. It's really, really not very fun. And so our teachers are not only having to have moved, but they have children that they're responsible for, and they're doing it in the middle of a school year and at the holiday season, which makes it incredibly hard. So I want to thank them for that, and I know that many of them will be spending time at the Indian Spring campus over the holiday break preparing their classrooms. And so because of that, we're providing all of the teachers and staff at Kendrick with up to 20 hours of additional duty pay and/or overtime, depending on the kind of position that they hold. And I appreciate your support to take care of them. And they're a little frazzled. I met with the teachers yesterday, and it's a hard move. So, you know, just lots of concerns about, is my stuff going to make it? And is it going to make it on time to my classroom, and will I have what I need? So we're going to take care of them, and I'm sure it'll be bumpy, too. Also, I want to thank Principal Lozano for her leadership for the move. I've been so impressed by how she has taken this on and owned it. And even from the beginning, it was her voice that got us to think about moving Kendrick to Indian Spring while construction was happening for the new school facility. And that was huge because she was the one interacting with the parents. So I want to thank her for every little detail and how she is working to make Indian Spring the home for Kendrick Elementary. We also want to recognize that the transition is going to be a little hard on our parents and our families. And Principal Lozano has been sharing information out to parents regularly. She's been getting their input with surveys and such and sharing what she knows. What I want you to know is that one of the most significant challenges that we'll have is transportation, and we are finalizing details to transport a larger number of Kendrick students than we currently do, and we'll be communicating that information out to parents before the holiday break. In fact, we worked with our consultant this morning who's assisting us with the transportation transition, and we haven't finalized the bus stops and the times, but it does look like we'll change the school start and end time for Kendrick to be able to accommodate routes and make sure we get kids there on time and back home on time. So we'll push that information out to parents as soon as we have it before the Christmas holiday. Also, we're planning to host an open house on January the 8th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Indian Spring so that the parents and students can see their school and their child's classroom before they start classes the next day on January the 9th. And so we'll be sending information out about that as well. Any questions about Kendrick and the move?
Thank you for compensating.
You're very welcome.
It was going to be my first question because the work is, the task is great, and to do it over Christmas break is doubly painful, so.
It is, and it's really hard the next couple of weeks as well. We have movers starting on Thursday, December 7th, actually picking up materials that have already been boxed by the teachers, but obviously they'll need time over the break to set up. Any other questions? Okay, next topic, Waco High School topping out celebration. You guys, if you were able to go on the tour with us, you could see all of the progress, just a tremendous amount of progress that has been made on the project, and we are approaching the halfway mark of completing Waco High School. And that means it's time for us to come together and celebrate as the final pieces of structural steel are being put into place. So Rogers O'Brien, O'Connell Robertson, and Waco ISD and all of our construction partners will celebrate the official topping out of the new Waco High School with a lunch event for all of the workers and invited community leaders on Thursday, December the 14th. That will be held from 11:00 to 1:00. And then the beam that will be topped out or hoisted into place at the conclusion of the lunch will include the signatures and all of the well wishes of everyone that comes out to the community beam signing opportunity that will be held on December the 12th from noon to 6:00. Again, that is December the 12th, noon to 6:00, a come-and-go event to sign the new beam, similar to what we did with GW Carver and Tennyson Middle School. We'll have an area that will be a place for the community to enter off of Coal Cord and 42nd Street, Lyons Way, on Lyons Way there, where that main entry of the new school will be. And then there'll also be some parking across the street at Coal Cord and 42nd. And that's Tuesday, December 12th from noon to 6:00. And again, the lunch ceremony for the Board and invited community leaders and construction workers will be December 14th from 11:00 to 1:00. I'll make sure you get a calendar invite. Any questions about Waco High topping out? All right, last thing, I just wanted to publicly congratulate two of our top district administrators for their selection for the prestigious Holdsworth Aspiring Superintendent Leadership Program. Dr. Josie Gutierrez and Dr. Dina Cornbloom were both selected to participate in the program. It's a 15-month, in-depth professional development experience held at Holdsworth Center in Austin. And they were selected along with a small group of top education leaders across the state to have this experience, to really cultivate their skills and knowledge, to hopefully one day become a Texas superintendent in the state of Texas. And so they'll have a lot of interactive, immersive, job-embedded learning activities, and I'll be traveling with them a couple of times and serving as their mentor through those 15 months. I'm really proud of the work that we've done with Holdsworth, especially with the Leadership Definition Framework. Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. Cornbloom were really the heavy hitters in getting that done, and I expect that this program will be equally as impressive. And I'll just mention that I believe they only selected 14 leaders across the state for this program, and we have two right here in Waco, Texas, so really proud of them. All right, congratulations.
Put it on a billboard.
Put it on a billboard.
Put it on a billboard.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kincanon, and congratulations, Dr. Cornbloom and Dr. Gutierrez. It really is, we are blessed to have you here, and we're so thankful that you're here. And of course, they're going to choose you. You guys are exemplary among, obviously, the entire state of Texas. So, yeah, congratulations.
They told me it was very competitive. They had a large applicant pool or large pool of nominees, and they were top, right in the top of the group, so.
I love it. I love that we have two here. Okay, moving on to item number six, information items and reports. Monthly financial report for the period end October 31st. Mr. Grant, do you have any questions?
Do not.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vidonia?
No.
Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to consent agenda seven. Mr. Grant, would you like anything pulled?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Vidonia?
No.
Mr. Guillory?
I'd like to recuse myself from K, 7K.
Okay, 7K. Mr. Ochoa?
7S, please.
7S, okay. Great, so we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to accept a consent agenda as presented, except for the recusal of 7K for Mr. Guillory, and removing 7S for more information. So we'll table that for actually another, the next board meeting or another board meeting.
I'm going to approve the agendas with the exception of K and S.
Okay, thank you. I have one by Mr. Vidonia, a second by Mr. Guillory. Mr. Grant, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Davis, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Vidonia, is there any discussion?
No.
Mr. Guillory, any discussion?
No.
And Mr. Ochoa, any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number eight, City of Waco. Downtown Development Project, we're so excited to have representatives from the city, and specifically, Mr. Balk here to present. They were able to present at an intergovernmental meeting that we had, and it's just really exciting to see kind of the vision of Waco kind of taking life. And so it's just really, really exciting. So I know you're going to be, enjoy this presentation, Mr. Balk.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Kincanon, members of the Board. My name is Tom Balk. I'm the Director of Strategic Initiatives. I'm also joined by, Jeremy Pacina is going to be presenting a small component of the project that's very significant to our effort. I'm also joined by our city manager, Bradley Ford. He won't be presenting, but I wanted to acknowledge and thank him. So again, I'm happy to, oop, we've got controls.
There you go.
Lovely. This has been a big project that's gone on long before my involvement in it. Many of you have been members of various stakeholder groups, conversations, brainstorming that has gone into this. I want to thank you for that effort and just share that I'm truly honored and excited to be the shepherd of it at this point. We have a very significant project area that's once-in-a-lifetime for any community in Texas, but is so significant and meaningful to our community. 60 acres stretched along our beautiful riverfront, an area that's been invested in over so many generations and so many councils and so many administrations to turn it into the essential feature that it is for our community today that affects the quality of life and what people think of when they think of enjoying time with their families here. So we know what it means to us, but we also recognize that for a downtown to perform right, it needs to be more than parking lots. It needs to be more than aged infrastructure. And so that conversation really began with some visioning to help us validate, does the rest of the development community at large recognize the significance of this opportunity? Really, to do that the right way, we wanted to, if we have a world-class opportunity in the heart of Waco to do redevelopment and new investment, we need to work with world-class partners. And so bringing in Ginsler to facilitate this analysis and engagement and study, that was a key step because we know that all of these things are leading to trying to set the stage for development with a world-class team. And so developers nationwide, throughout the continent, throughout the world, they know what Ginsler means. And so that was really special and meaningful for us to make that commitment, and that started in April 2022. It was a narrower scope. Over years, we've known that this need existed downtown and particularly in close proximity to our city hall. Our city hall was designed and built in the '30s, and it was actually opened in 1930 for a workforce that was tremendously smaller. So we've grown a lot, we have needs, we have a lot of vacant land around us, so we have kind of these combinations of strange things that force us to keep coming back to this question of what should be downtown? We know we have needs that could be there, but what else? So our focus was really narrow for several iterations into the past, but through fruitful brainstorming and conversations, while nothing's set in stone, there's a shared opportunity here to work together and talk about a larger area. So about a third of that 60 acres is some shared interest in what could be the future of even property that the school district owns. So that's what transitioned from where we started in April of 2022. We pivoted into this bigger bubble of 60 acres in October of '22 to begin the stakeholder engagement in the winter of that year, presenting these concepts that Ginsler prepared in April of '23. And really, the heart and soul of a lot of that concept work, and I'm sorry, the image in the middle of the screen there kind of doesn't do it justice at this scale, but a pretty dynamic and expansive concept that involved entertainment, public, and P3-type facilities, as well as commercial, residential, and mixed use. The story that they wanted to organize this whole thing around, though, really came back to where we started. The central location of our city hall was originally laid out in the historic town square of a community in Texas. There's many of them, but it's unique that our city hall is there, and it was aligned with a strong connection to, at that time, that there was no suspension bridge, but there were these very significant springs right next to the suspension bridge. So the connectivity to that riverfront was always intended to be there, and after the tornado, after urban renewal, that connection was lost because the pieces that were necessary from an economic development standpoint at that time, we needed a convention center, we needed a hotel. These pieces were great additions when they came in, but that connectivity was lost over the years. So fast forward to where we are now, and much of that infrastructure has aged or sized inappropriately for our needs now. It reopens the opportunity to reexamine that and try to restore that connection and think about what it can do to drive a downtown in our community. With that, some of the key public and P3 institutions also take us back to the beginning of the exercise where it's like, what does a new city hall mean for this? And a new city hall is kind of just an easy tag to put on it, but really, our organization is so large at this point that it's a campus. It's a municipal services campus, and what that should do for us is two key things, is that it gives us the management synergy and opportunity to bring more of our workforce under one roof or on one campus to maximize our ability to interact with each other and manage and maintain a high level of quality, but also maximize that level of quality that we provide to the community. The community comes to us for services, we need to make that easy, and we need to make that a very high-quality, positive experience. And with that, obviously, we're serving the same folks y'all are. So that's why this conversation has been a repeated collaboration of what could this mean for both of us? Do we have aligned needs? And there's a lot of similarity and strengths there, so we're hopeful to continue that conversation going forward. Moving into just kind of the overview again of like what Ginsler approached this question as, they imagined a series of districts to help emphasize to developers, we know that there's got to be a dynamic. Moving into just kind of the overview again of like what Ginsler approached this question as, it's that they imagined a series of districts to help emphasize the developers. We know that there's got to be a dynamic mix of elements to really drive all-day, every-day activation of a downtown to make it vibrant and function properly. And with these P3 facilities or public facilities, there's, there's significant moves and priming that our community can do to begin that, that activation. So bringing our workforce into a more concentrated area helps generate foot traffic that makes it more viable to bring in restaurants, entertainment, commercial. So representing that graphically in a diagram like this, residential at the top, sports and entertainment in sort of the middle, the blue is that historic city hall kind of district, and the bottom being the, the performing arts. That's another significant component of the concept here. Our community has some very pronounced needs and opportunity to have a landmark performing arts institution in our community that serves a very wide area, in fact, that we've found that in our trade area, people would prefer to travel to a smaller market than to the larger markets to avoid the hassles of parking and traffic. So we're excited by the convergence of a lot of opportunities within this project. The other significant thing I'll note just briefly about the Performing Arts Center, its, its location helps serve as the bridge, the tie between all the other investment that's gone on downtown and currently at the pavilion development, the riverfront development. That's going to create ripples. That's going to create a huge demand and attraction. People are going to go there to eat and play, and these projects will help draw that activity into the 60-acre development as well. So there's just an image of what that experience may be if you're standing essentially from the location of the suspension bridge, looking back to city hall, and on the right would be this municipal services campus, on the left would be a new convention center and HQ hotel. These concepts have been put out there in the hands of the development community to start wetting the appetite and helping them imagine what, what they would contribute to the recipe. The details can vary some. The locations could vary some based on expertise and analysis. That kind of takes me into the next stage here of discussion, though. The, the moment that we're at is that as of October 13th, we've put this all together in a statement of what does the city really need from the development community? What qualifications do we demand? And this, this is significant as a departure from past efforts. We've, we've tried smaller versions of this in the past, but with a more limited ask, with more, I'm sorry, with less context to offer. In this case, we've done the context upfront to say, we know the size and shape of our opportunity. We know what qualifications that should entail because of these specialty types of development that are identified. So developers, we ask you to come back to us with evidence that your team composition can meet all these demands, that your access to financing and equity are ready to roll into this. So we've issued that. We're out there. We've, we've received a lot of registered interest. Over 150 teams have reached out to us already to say that they are tracking with this. We hosted a non-mandatory pre-submitting meeting, and we had over 60 participants on the line. We've received a ton of questions. I had a call just the other day where a developer was saying, we are still, we are just amazed that this project exists because this is the first Texas community on our radar that had the guts to go at a project the right way like this. I think often that RFQ step is omitted to use a RFP instead. Anyhow, the buzz is palpable. The proof will be in the pudding, though. Who, who actually submits? Well, that will take place, and we'll know next Thursday. So that's, that's a momentous occasion for us, and I really want to thank Dr. Kincaid for agreeing to serve on our scoring panel. We're going to have a pretty tight turnaround on the scoring process to get finalists identified by the 15th before the holidays so they can come present to us the first week of January.
I hope we don't have, I hope we don't have 150 to read.
I agree. I am, I am excited and scared at the same time. So we will move quickly through the process to get to presenting to the city council who the recommendations, who the recommended finalists are. We may recommend one or more finalists, and then try to move into what we're calling the pre-development agreement by the, by the 16th of January, I believe. So that'll get us running. All of that means, though, like, we want to know who we're negotiating with to get under construction in 2025. We need that first phase to see tangible progress in 2025. And so that's achievable. We're excited. We're meeting the demand. So much of the work has gone into preparing for this step. The story map tool that is what Jeremy's going to feature for us in a little bit of detail, that's months of preparation, to be honest, of anticipating what kind of information, what kind of data do developers need to know that a project is real, to know that an opportunity is more than just the sum of its parts. And so he and the economic development team, city manager Ford, have anticipated so much of that, that even feedback about that tool has been gushy. People have been like, we haven't seen this in communities like San Francisco and New York City. This is an amazing tool that says you're serious. That is our mantra. We are serious. We want the best. Paired with that, we know that the developer teams are good, and the city, frankly, is going to need validating market study analysis. Like, we need to know that the dream that we have on paper is real. We need to know that the, the market will support it and what those numbers need to be. So that's in progress. We also initiated the survey process as well to get the property boundaries pinned down so that we are dreaming within the right boundaries. That all plays out over a series of months. We know that RFQ, as I mentioned, is going to be kind of to that pre-development agreement stage in January, simultaneous with the effort we're in. We're going to have that market study. It's going to give us its first milestone in January to answer questions about the stadium and the hotel and convention center. The piece that'll trail after that is kind of the mixed-use concept overall. Mixed use is the glue that ties it all together, to be honest. You have to have an active street life. So if you have large institutions but no active street life, you're still going to have a pretty quiet downtown. So that mixed-use piece, we'll have better information about that by March. And the survey, it's going to incrementally roll in. We'll, we'll get each parcel accumulated, but by the end of May, we'll have everything together. So that gives the developers exactly what they need at the time that they need it to help us continue moving forward. So it's an aggressive schedule. We're very excited about it. I'm always, of course, very excited about it. I'm going to let Jeremy show us that tool real quick, so you can be excited about that as well, and then we'll open it up to some questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Pacina. I am the interim director of economic development for the city, and I am actually much more exciting and fun than Tom. So this is the, this is the fun part of the presentation. And so, I mean, you understand the magnitude of this moment, right? I mean, and you, as a board, and, and all of the citizens are as involved, and it's an as important of a moment to all of us. And so this is the task, right? How do we go out for such a big goal and do it in a way that's thoughtful? Do it in a way where we don't lose who we are as a city? Do it in a way where it doesn't become a generic downtown, but it's, it's part of who we are? Even being here and, and seeing that y'all did the open house for Kendrick Elementary, where people who went there can go back because story matters, right? History matters. And so even that nod to it is such an alignment with what we're trying to do, is, is not bring in something different, but how do we bring in something that is Waco? And so like, like Tom mentioned, this is a national RFQ. So how do we tell the story for people who've never been to Waco, who, who don't know anything about it? And so this is the tool that we, as a team, have created, and it, the goal was, how do we introduce someone to Waco who doesn't know Waco? And so we're going to work together and scroll through this a little bit. It's a live website, so it can change all the time. Again, that's the Ginsler vision, and if you slide to the right there, if you hit that, this is just a video representation of just the impact, right? The, the transformational change that we're talking about. And then if you continue to scroll, what we've done here is we just said, how, how do we give them all the information they could possibly want, right? So part of being in economic development means you're a little bit of a nerd. And so this is what we did, is we put all of the parcels on the map, and if you click on them, it'll show you, it'll give you what is exactly there right now. If you click on the actual yellow box, it'll show you the acreage, it'll show you the ownership. I mean, we tried to give them every question they could ask, all right there in the palm of their hands. And if you keep scrolling, it highlights some of the tools that we, as the city, can utilize to help because we are committed to seeing this project through in a thoughtful way. If you continue to scroll down, we get into demographics. We show you how much capital investment has happened in Waco in the last five years. How many projects have happened? If you scroll sideways there, it shows you how many of those projects were in downtown. This isn't something that's happened on a whim. This is something that's been building for a long time, and what we recognize is this is our moment, right? And then if you continue scrolling, we actually break down, these are the investments, these are the projects, that we have long been invested in downtown. And so you can continue to scroll down, and, and what we'll get into is demographics of the city. Who lives here? What, what is their story? And you continue going, and all of these have slides. I'm not going to take you through all of them, but this is great reading. So like, if you're bored on a Friday night, like, man, this is what we do. But you, you can continue scrolling. It gives you employment data. It tells you about the jobs and the market for labor. If you keep going, it'll tell you about our multifamily sites. If you keep scrolling, it'll tell you about our office data. And it's important because nationally, there, there's a, offices are going empty, but in Waco, we need Class A office space. And so we don't want someone who doesn't know Waco to come in and give a universal fit. We want something that's made specifically for Waco. And so you keep scrolling, we have restaurant data, we have hotel data. I like this one because I'm a nerd. And so if you click on the open hotels, it'll show you which ones are open, and if you click on those, it'll show you their average daily rate, their occupancy rate. It gives you all of the details that you could ask for, and you hit combine, it shows you the ones that are upcoming, when they will open, and how many rooms they'll add to the market. So we want to take all of the questions out of the equation. You keep going, we have convention data, and then we have downtown highlights. And so we'll, we'll go there. And the downtown highlights, what's neat about this is this is a, a story map where as you scroll down, it'll take you to each of these locations, and we have pictures in that slide deck. So you can see what Waco was and how it's transformed. And the thing about this being live is, at our last meeting, we had suggestions, like, hey, these things should be added. If they're not on here, they should be. And so that's actually what I plan to do this week, is to get those new sites added because that's a part of the story. That's what we want to see, and that's what we want others to see. And so this is a live tool that's constantly being updated. And then at the very bottom, there's a lot of those to scroll through because we're really proud of our city. At the very bottom of it, we go to an interactive map. So I have a background in IT, so I like to do cool IT things. And, and this, with this particular tool on your cell phone, if you open it, you can enable your GPS, and then as you walk around Waco, it'll show you where you're at in relation to these sites so that you can get the information about what, what are your next, what is the historic significance of what I'm at? Because our goal is, national, international firms, they're going to come to Waco to see it, right? They're going to want to see it with their own eyes, so they can walk around with this tool, and they can hear the stories, they can see the pictures, they can know a little bit more about Waco. And so this is just one of the tools that we have created to try to tell the story and to try to invite people into what makes Waco great. And so that is our tool, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Tom, and he will answer any and all questions you have.
Thank you all. Happy to answer any. If there's none, that's fine, too. I know you got a long agenda.
We've talked about this as a board some, but I'd love for the public to hear. You're talking about a 60-acre project, which is extraordinary for any downtown. How much of the 60 acres does Waco ISD own?
Approximately 24, if I'm not mistaken.
So just under 50%?
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Gillery?
I just want to say, Jeremy, man, that's impressive. You're a talented individual, man. I love that.
I checked it before the meeting to see if it was on there. I'll check it Monday morning. That's such an incredible tool, even, I mean, even for any city to have. I think it's impressive that we have it. It's really cool.
I want to thank the two of you for leading out in this way, but for city manager Ford, your leadership in this is, to me, the key to it all. Thank you. This is going to be an incredible transformation for the city itself and a place that's already thriving. To think about it exponentially growing even more is, is overwhelming. So thank you for your leadership in that. It, it's greatly appreciated.
It's great to think about, you know, stories of my parents told and their grandparents about growing up in Waco, and at some point in the future, my kids will be telling that about the way it was. That's pretty amazing.
I, I, I really want to thank you guys for this. I think it's a robust presentation, but it also shows the depth of thought and intention that has really been put into this. But I, you know, I, I think, Jeremy, you're right. It's amazing. Your IT background really does kind of shine through in this. Really just so thankful, so thankful for the vision. And I, I agree, city manager Ford, you, you, along with the council and your team, you've really gathered some top-notch people to really kind of envision, hey, what would, what could be possible? But I also love that you've put the parameters of what is possible, and here, developers is what is Waco, so that it's not just this blank slate that people can come and kind of write on and kind of rewrite, kind of the history and the story of Waco. I think that is very strategic, really smart, and it shows a level of care for our community that is really appreciated. So I'm, I'm very excited, and I can't wait to see all of this. Yeah, take, I mean, when you guys were talking about seeing developers, top-notch developers, I mean, you really are looking at some of the best of the best, and I'm so thankful for your, your intentionality in that. So, thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Good job. Super exciting. Lots of good things happening in our community. Moving on to item number nine, review and discuss Tennyson Middle School Construction Project. Ms. Barretta.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kincaid, members of the board. Very happy to be here tonight with the Tennyson Middle School Design Team and Construction Team, and they're going to give us a quick update on our progress there, which is very, it's, it's all good stuff, you know? So.
All right. Good evening again.
Good evening.
So we'll start off with a quick little animation here. Everybody loves the visuals. So we've got, similar to some of the things you've seen in the past, we've got a video of the original design rendering overlaid with some construction drone footage. So can see a good side-by-side here. So the one on, on the bottom is what you've seen before, starting on the classroom wing, that two-story portion. Again, this is the prototype that was developed alongside Carver. So a lot of similarities that you're going to see in the design there as we come around the corner of this building. That's your admin wing in that brick color on the corner. And then turning, you see the entry drive that comes off the main street there with your main entry alongside your two-story gym volume. So again, very similar to Carver, but you can start how the construction on video on the top is progressing, all those textures of the concrete coming out with the envelope being finished. I believe we were talking earlier that roofing is actually almost 100% done, so what you see in that video above is actually, you know, almost two, three weeks old at this point, maybe even a little bit older. But, you know, really great progress happening, really starting to see that design vision from the team and, and the engagement with the, the teachers and the staff come, come to life. So very excited. And I'll turn it over to Isaiah here to step us through some more detail.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll start off with some aerials. So this is the, this is what it was. There's that gym that we demolished and the track. You can kind of see the shape of the school there and that L really close to the existing school, pouring our tilt walls on the ground and then raising them up. And then you see the steel going in in September with the roof decking, roofing coming on right behind it. You can see that white getting in there. That's the actual TPO roofing. Brings us to November. And like Doug was saying, we're even a little past this, where we're just finishing up the last couple of square feet of roofing right now. So large transformation, you can see that proximity in these aerials to the existing campus, really great utilization of the phasing there with the existing campus.
How close is the the new building to the existing building right now? Just out of curiosity.
Five feet.
Wow.
Closest point.
That's awesome.
Five feet.
So we've got concrete, we're eighty-nine percent done with concrete. We've got one final pour in about two weeks. That's in Area C, and thirty-six thousand cubic yards of concrete, so that's three thousand, six hundred concrete trucks so far. We are completely done with steel, eight hundred and nine tons of steel, which is equivalent to one thousand, six hundred and eighteen grand pianos. Lots of steel. And our roofing was eighty-five percent complete at the time of this presentation. As I said, it's basically done at this point. Hundred sixteen thousand square feet, so that's over two football fields of roof. Some of the interior progress, our masons are flying through the interior. They're actually gonna be mostly done with the interior masonry next week, as well as the fireproofing, making great progress there, which releases our other, get their overhead work in. Some of those things are getting storm drains in, so the water stays out of the building, goes into the storm drain systems, very important. And then some of the other things, we've got a ton of plumbing work and as well as our hydronic piping, which is basically supplying the cold and hot water to our HVAC units, getting a lot of those loops in ahead of time so we're ready when those come. And framing is underway, focus on on those electrical rooms, get that power running. Really great progress right now, have some great trade partners, working really well, not stepping on each other, so we're all working together as a unit. Like we touched on earlier, one of our biggest achievements is that this site is so tight. And see on the left picture there, that's the tightest point, five feet, stand there and touch both buildings. So especially raising tilt walls, you know, you're raising a massive concrete panel. One of the things is, we did that during the summer, so the kids weren't there for safety, but didn't have any issues. Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
And then we also have transmission lines on the other side, because, you know, one problem wasn't enough. So we have to be very careful lifting around there, and that's what drove us to have to go inside out with this building, where typically you pour all your floors and then your walls. We did all our walls first and then came in and poured our floors after the steel was up. So a unique challenge, but we're able to get through the structural phase with no problems there. Engagement has been a big goal of ours. So you see our beam signed there, really successful beam signing activity there. Great to see the building right behind it, tons of community involvement, tons of great stories of people coming out who had been to Tennyson Middle School, some that were even there on the first day of the original Tennyson Middle School, as well as all the kids who are excited for that school to be, the new school to be ready for them. We also had a topping out party recently where we acknowledge our trade partners for all the hard work they're doing. Dr. Kinkanen and some other Waco ISD members attended that, which we really appreciate. Kind of looking at the overall schedule, start at the very end of two thousand and twenty-two, really beginning of two thousand and twenty-three. And now we're getting to the end of two thousand and twenty-three, moving into the inside of the building. We're, we've got our transformer coming in tomorrow from the power company, so we're gonna have power on, you know, this month. And our original goal was to have the building climatized, have air on at the end of January. We are dealing with some setbacks there with some equipment. So we had, there was a cybersecurity breach, our main supplier, they have been delayed. So right now, we're working through how to minimize that delay, bring in some of those times, as well as looking to plan getting as much done as possible before then. The good news is that we're confident that we're absolutely still getting this school open on time. We're still working with the district really closely to make sure that move-in process is smooth. So as we're moving through, we're shooting to have most of our framed walls complete by the end of February for that original April, you know, completion. And then May is, you know, when, as the students get out of the existing school, district's moving out, portables are being removed, then we'll demolish the old school, build the parking lot and drives behind there, as well as building the track, and that will be done at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. That brings us to questions.
Can you remind us how, what percentage of, excuse me, tradespeople were local? Do you know that?
I think the number was about fifty-eight percent of the work, yes.
On how big a budget?
Sixty, well, I guess, construction budget sixty-seven, or, is sixty-seven million, what's your overall? Excited.
I'm really excited. I think the, I just want to talk about the the beam signing. We were there, and it was really great. There was huge turnout, a lot more than I, for some reason, had anticipated. And one lady came kind of out of breath, kind of walking up and was like, I saw it on TV and I didn't want to miss out. Like, I went to Tennyson, and I really don't want to miss out on signing this so that's up in the school, and just a lot of excitement about that. But it was very obvious to me as, and I think it was on one of the pictures, and you can't see it, but as you walk up to the old building, you know, kind of where you're talking about that little space where it's only five feet apart, you can see the old building and some of the tiles falling off, and you can see it actively deteriorating, and then you have this brand-new building. And I thought, it was time, it was time. So thank you so much. Yeah, Mr. Gilery.
So the Waco High report that you gave, y'all used a local company for steel? Was that right? And y'all used it for Tennyson as well?
Steel was, steel was not local for this one. I think Waco High, you guys might have, but yeah.
Okay.
Hundred percent for Waco High, I think, was all local steel.
Well, wanted to thank y'all for, you know, at the beginning of these projects, you know, the the promises that were made to use local companies and sticking to that. And appreciate that. And also see the transformation right here, where you dug, you know, over the, over a year, I see you, I see you doing something up there. But thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Super excited to get in there this coming.
Summer.
Oh, my goodness, it's happening very quickly. And so thank you to your diligence, not only to stay in budget, but also on the timeline. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to item number ten announcements. Elizabeth?
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kinkanen, trustees. We have just under three weeks until the Christmas break. And there is a chance of almost every night, beginning tonight, you can enjoy the sounds of the special season that we're in through incredible student performances. This schedule is printed for each trustee at your seat. Thank you to communications. And it's also been shared on our social media, highlighting twenty-two fine arts performances that are scheduled through Tuesday, December nineteenth. So wherever you are, wherever you'd like to be, there is a chance to go enjoy the incredible work of our fine arts directors, teachers, campus leaders and staff who make these events possible to showcase our truly talented students. And speaking of talented students, Waco ISD Athletics is currently hosting the Waco ISD Classic Basketball Tournament, so we're in basketball season. During halftime of a game tomorrow night, UHS versus La Vega, we will have a very special jersey retirement ceremony for Trojan alumni and current Oklahoma City Thunder Guard forward, Kenrick Williams. I don't think I've ever gotten to read something quite like that before. Tip-off for that game is scheduled at six thirty PM in the UHS gym. Please come out, support the Trojans, both current and former, and cheer on our incredible students. Dr. Kinkanen mentioned that we're at a very exciting point in the construction of our new home for the Waco High Lions. And I just want to reiterate that the community is invited December twelfth, from noon to six. We're starting to push out that information. We'll definitely have morning show broadcasts and all sorts of other things planned by communications to get the word out as well. Sorry, Dr. Kinkanen.
Make me get out of bed at like four o'clock, I don't know.
Morning news starts early, that is for sure. But the board will also be invited out to the site on December fourteenth for that special topping-out lunch. And it looks like we will have the, you all will have the opportunity to enjoy two meals together that day, lunch and dinner. The board's regular December meeting is also on December fourteenth.
Wonderful.
I was gonna suggest a friendly competition to see which board member could attend the most, but I know trustee Vedanya is probably gonna hit all of these.
Every single one of them.
Yep.
I just wanted to say, I'm gonna miss the the Waco High topping-out ceremony because my daughter will be graduating from Texas A&amp;M. But at first, going through this process with Tennyson and Waco High, which both of my kids attended, I was sad because they weren't able to experience these facilities. And I'm just thrilled that the next batch of kids that are gonna come through have state-of-the-art facilities, unlike any other community that's not just a, you know, a cornfield community that's popping up fast. But, yeah, so I just wanted to say at first, I was really sad because they missed out. But to think about the next seventy-five years of kids that are gonna be coming through, and in seventy-five years, they're gonna say, this school's old, let's do something new. Just really, really, really exciting.
It's really special.
And we'll have more. We have, we'll have a groundbreaking for South Waco and for Kendrick when we come back from Christmas and into February. And.
Still tracking an opportunity to to fully dedicate the GW, new GW.
And then GW Carver dedication. And so then we'll start the next round of celebrations, or opening and dedicating schools.
Great. Well, trustee Ochoa has thrown the gauntlet down for Christmas cheer.
I heard it.
And so we'll see who can speed over to University High School for Kendrick's Christmas program. Yeah, really, thank you so much for everything you guys have done, just this administration. I'm just so incredibly thankful, so incredibly thankful. It's a lot of hard work, and we are seeing amazing things happen, not only in our community, but in our schools and with our kids. And I am so proud, so proud that my daughter goes to Waco ISD, and I'm so proud to be affiliated with Waco ISD. And so on that note, we're adjourned.